Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Today is the March 8, 2018 Town Board Work Session. Could you all please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a couple of announcements before we begin. Well, if anybody could tell, we had a few storms. Two big storms. And it's been a little overwhelming for all the residents and for our Highway Department and for everybody. So I think we persevered pretty well. A big thank you to all our first responders, our Highway Department, Police Department, Dutchess County Department of Emergency Services. The state, probably from last Friday till today, I've been on about 14 conference calls. And I'm not exaggerating. Sometimes two a day, sometimes three a day. And usually with Dutchess County Department of Emergency Services, New York State, and Central Hudson. They've been very responsive. They explain everything they can, give as much information as they can, which is great. And we try to pass along that on our Facebook page, on our Police Department pages, on our website. And it's been hectic, but our Highway Department's done a great job. Thank you very much to Kenny and all his crew. I have to tell you that, where else was I gonna go with that? Oh, also, the Governor's Office. Dylan Miyoshi, he is our representative. He's been excellent with us. He's been calling me every day, whatever we need, putting things out to the state, DOT. We had a really hairy night last night. We had a couple trees down on state roads, on 82 into Teconic, Route 52. The roads were impassable, and the state DOT responded right away. They were excellent, and I just want to thank everybody. We've been thinking about opening the brush drop-off, maybe in another couple of weeks, because a lot of people are calling. Many people are calling, saying that they'd like to have brush pickup. Well, brush pickup is gonna be virtually impossible. We just don't have the budget. But we can do brush drop-off, like we always do, twice a year. Maybe this year, we'll do it a third time. We'll do it at the end of the month. I'll talk to the board and make a decision, and we will advertise it with plenty of notice. Probably, I'm thinking, the end of March. So the ground could dry up a little. And where we do the brush drop-off down Limekeen, it'll be tough, if it's wet like this, to get your cars in and trucks in like that to drop off your brush. So we will get as much notice to the people in the town as quick as possible. But besides that, I want to thank everybody again. Tonight is our work session. We have a few discussions tonight. First, we have our Conservation Advisory Council. And we have Brent Felwig. He's our chairman. How are you, Brent?
Good, Nick. How are you? Good.
Thank you. Very good. And I'd like to bring in all our boards for discussion throughout the year. I'm starting with the CAC, because we also have a discussion with our planner about wetland bankers. So it seemed to work pretty good. And my idea is so the people understand what all these boards do. Sometimes, they don't understand what the CAC or the Architectural Review Board or any of these do. So I'd like you to give us a little explanation on what you guys look at and what you guys do, if you could do that for us.
Excellent, Nick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure will. What I'd like to do is kind of give you guys a little history of what the CAC has done over the years. CAC is an acronym for Conservation Advisory Council. So we'll get into what that means a little bit later. We'll give you a little history of what we've done, how long we've been in operation in the town. And interspersed with that'll be some of the things that we are involved in. So we'll kind of meld the whole thing together, and then we'll wrap it up with some questions afterwards. So the Conservation Advisory Council, the CAC, has been around, was created in May of 1968. So we're 50 years old this year.
Happy Christmas.
By a vote of the Town Board. The enabling legislation is Article 12-F of the New York General Municipal Law, Section 239-X and Y for a conservation board. We're a conservation council. We're an advisory group. So we don't have any approval power. We advise, you know, local governments, local government functions, local government boards in the town. In the early 1970s, one of the first things that these Fishkill CAC did was they joined with other CACs in the area for a creek water study, primarily on the Fishkill Creek. Samples were taken, samples were analyzed. The data was pooled by New York State DEC, and that was used for statewide water course contamination survey. So that was one of the big things that we did back in the early 1970s, when contamination was hardly heard of. I wasn't involved then, but the CAC was. 1978, the CAC participated in the countywide freshwater wetlands field survey. That generated data which helped in developing New York State Registered Freshwater Wetlands Maps. And we still use those today. So we were involved in that. The CAC in 1982 began reviewing development applications for environmental impacts. And that's one of the main functions we do now. We submit written analyses, appear at public hearings as appropriate. This interaction primarily is with the planning board, but also certainly can be the zoning board and the Town Board as well, as well as other entities in town. A big accomplishment that the CAC did in 1983 was we investigated the concept of computer-assisted mapping, what's commonly called GIS now. Town of East Fishkill was one of the first towns to have a GIS system. We kind of tested it out. And the chairman at that point in time, John Osborne, was integral in setting up the system that's now used at the EMC, the Countywide Environmental Management Council. And GIS systems are used all over the place now. We were one of the first ones that had one, and it's still being used here in the town. 2007, jumping ahead a little bit. The CAC, along with a local Girl Scout, initiated the East Fishkill Town Arbor Day-Earth Day Celebration. Okay? And that was a little over 10 years ago now. This one-day festival in the spring gives us a chance to celebrate the environment that's part of everyone's property and part of the town. And it also gives us a chance to emphasize trees. We've also emphasized a lot of other things, you know, such as stormwater conservation, which is important, you know, as we develop and flooding issues come up. And, you know, what individual residents can do to help them have a better mesh with the environment that's on their property and the environment within the town. That event's gonna continue this year. We're gonna have it at the end of April. Look for some signs and some advertisements for that. 2011, jumping ahead a little bit. The CAC office moved to the Davis House. It allowed us more space, a designated location to meet. Couple neat things we did over there, again involving the local Girl Scouts, was we had two rain gardens installed, so people can go over there and see what an actual rain garden is and how it functions. And we also did a wonderful seating area that another Girl Scout Silver Award project was involved with. So those are a couple of things at the Davis House. 2012, jumping ahead a little bit more. The CAC was instrumental in beginning the formation of the Fishkill Creek Watershed Advisory Group. That group has changed names a couple times, but it's modeled after the Wappingers Creek Intermunicipal Council. And what that group, what the Wappingers Creek Group does now, quite well, and what we're hoping to get the Fishkill Creek Group to do, is to coordinate the towns in the watershed. So, you know, water obviously doesn't stay in our town when it flows into the Fishkill Creek. It goes downstream, and we get water from towns upstream from us. So watersheds are something that we really find that good coordination can lead to better conservation. The CAC is currently staffed by six regular and one ad hoc member. The member backgrounds, we've got a huge amount of diversity. We've got a landscape architect. We've got a forester, an arborist. We've got an environmental educator. We've got a gardener. We've got a retired IBMer. We've got an HR professional and an insurance professional. So we've got, we run the gamut. That allows us to really take, you know, not a single focus, but, you know, really a balanced perspective on comments and ideas and suggestions that we can submit to the town. So, just to kind of summarize, advocacy for the environmental protection and review of applications for development, they continue as primary CAC functions. We feel that our work benefits all the residents of East Fishkill, as well as the local businesses, because it helps to preserve the appearance of the town. Okay? Good planning, good conservation of the natural areas that we have in the town helps maintain this town the way it looks. The environment we're all stewards of creates the beauty and diverse landscapes of our town. Makes it a great place to live.
Questions? Thanks, Brian. Yeah, well, you know, I was gonna ask you a question about, I've been talking to the supervisor in the town of Fishkill, Public Hall, and he was discussing with me, which I didn't hear about yet until he told me, was an intermunicipal aquifer protection law. So, you know, he says it's important because as the town buys and we control a lot of water, different water areas of the town, it's, to protect it is vital, because without it, we need to expand business, and we need water and sewer to expand business. So he says that this is like instrumental. Has the CAC discussed anything about that?
We haven't discussed that yet. But we would be willing to reach out to Fishkill and see whether that's something that we can work together with. My personal thoughts on that, aquifers are much harder to protect. The water's usually much slower-moving. And anything to do with protection of an aquifer has to tie into protection of surface water, too. You know, wetlands and streams, because they're all interconnected.
Gotcha.
You know, I mean, you get aquifer recharge areas, which a lot of times are wetlands. A lot of times, you'll get sources of streams that are, you know, spring seeps, you know, and wet areas that feed streams, you know, that provide the water for them. So there's just so many connections. You really have to look at it as a whole system. That's kind of what we hope to have the Fishkill Creek Watershed Advisory Group morph into is a whole watershed protection group. And, you know, I think certainly aquifers, you know, groundwater will be something that should very well be a part of that.
Well, like you said, if you're a good steward of the environment, it makes sense, because if you're a good steward, then we don't have to pay as much to put the filters and other things that we have to do for all these water systems. Because it costs the towns and counties a lot of money.
You hit the nail on the head, as far as the economic benefit of being a good steward. I mean, that's really the bang for the buck you get out of, you know, conservation. And, you know, a lot of times, conservation is looked at, well, that's, you know, that's something for the, you know, wired-rid-glass tree-huggers to do. But it's something for business people to do, too. Because if, you know, if it's, if it costs less to get clean water, everybody's a winner.
Absolutely, absolutely. No questions? How long you been there?
Oh, my gosh.
Not 50, you said.
No, not 50. I'll bet I've been 15 years as involved in the CAC and probably 10 as chairman. Yeah. It's a good group. The group has changed over the years. We've got several long-term members that have been on for a long time. And we've got a couple of new folks. You know, one, our newest member you guys are considering, you know, he's part of the Beacon Institute. So that's where we're hoping to, you know, really kind of tie in, you know, more people in the Fishkill watershed.
Yeah, we appointed him last meeting.
Fantastic. Good. I thought you would.
And we saw him. He came by, he was, he's a resident of Hillside Lake. He came for our...
Oh, no, no, no. He's not a resident. But he's a resident in town, but he's very interested in the plan.
He was helpful in the Hillside Lake situation.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, he's very excited about being involved.
Right. Hasn't missed a meeting yet?
He's batting a thousand.
All right. No other questions? Nothing?
Okay, good.
Okay, Brent, thank you. Appreciate that. And maybe you want to stick around?
I am absolutely gonna stick around.
Because, you know, maybe you could put a little input on Michelle, Michelle Robbins. She's our planner. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Our next discussion is wetland bankers. So this is a very interesting topic. So would you mind starting?
So, no. Excuse me. So it's a perfect segue, talking about protecting wetland resources. Excuse me, it's a little under the weather. But essentially, we have an opportunity here. A landowner in the town approached the town because they are considering trying to get approved a wetland mitigation bank on their property. About 175 acres of land bisected back when his parents owned the property, by '84, when '84 was constructed. And he was reluctant to develop the property because he had a lot of fond memories of using the property when he was a child and wanted to do something a little bit different with the property. So he approached me about it several months ago at this point, and I suggested that he contact some different agencies. And he did. And as a result of contacting, like, DEP and DEC and several other agencies, he was put into contact with someone about wetland mitigation banking. And essentially, it works, well, let me give you a little bit of background on it first. So right now, we're under rules that were promulgated in 1980, under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act. And that's, they're sort of responsible for the wetland laws we all follow today. So anytime you disturb a wetland or anything that's a regulated water body, you have rules and permits that you have to follow. There are certain activities that are allowed and certain activities that are not allowed or only allowed by permit. Then in 2008, the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers, they worked together to make some changes to the laws. And one of them was to include different standards for what they call compensatory mitigation. And basically, all that is, is the restoration, establishment, enhancement, and/or, in certain circumstances, preservation of wetlands, streams, and other aquatic resources for the purposes of offsetting unavoidable adverse impacts which remain after all-appropriate and practical avoidance and minimization has been achieved. So essentially, it's just the restoration or enhancement of wetlands after you've considered any impacts and avoidance to those wetlands. So they decided to make some changes because what they were finding was that when individual landowners impacted a wetland, they were required oftentimes to mitigate for that impact. And a lot of times, the mitigation is two-to-one or four-to-one or three-to-one, depending on what the agency determines the value of that wetland is that was affected. And...
How would they determine the value of a wetland?
They determine it by looking at the functions of that wetland, whether or not it provides habitat, whether or not it provides flood attenuation, whether or not it has certain stormwater values, like for taking runoff and actually filtering runoff and affecting water quality. And there's many different functions of wetlands. And some are definitely more high-functioning than others. And it, sometimes it depends on the location of the wetland, whether or not it's in a certain watershed. That's more important than other watersheds. And I only mean that as, for instance, a high priority in this region is anything that's in the New York City DEP drinking water watershed. So any land in there is often seen as a higher priority for protection.
Highly protected, highly regulated.
Exactly. Because ultimately, the water in that area ends up in someone's water faucet, you know, anywhere from here to New York City, basically.
So all those New York City residents, they need us here.
And actually, just as an aside, there are many people now in other locations other than New York City that are tapping into New York City water supply. The city is smart in that they've been offering taps now to upstate folks because...
They want to make money.
Right. They want to make money, but they also realize that, and they need land up here for either preservation or for some of their infrastructure. And oftentimes, when they have a project, they will offer taps into the New York City water supply so that people can have, you know, a municipal water supply, basically. So it is more than just New York City, which is an aside. But anyway, the point of a wetland mitigation bank is you have a site where wetlands are restored or created or enhanced. And they said, "In exceptional circumstances preserved" for the purpose of providing mitigation in advance of unavoidable impacts to wetlands. So if a development project is located within a service area of a wetland mitigation bank, an applicant who wants to develop a piece of land may, if they're gonna disturb wetlands on their site, they can propose to compensate for that disturbance of the wetlands by purchasing credits from a wetland mitigation bank. And the wetland mitigation bank, the way they determine how many credits a bank has is very complicated, but a very simplistic answer for that is they look at the different functions of the wetland. They look at the location of the wetland. So if it's got major habitat functions, if it is over an aquifer, for instance. And a lot of East Fishkill is over an aquifer.
Or in DEP watershed.
Or in DEP, exactly. Or a DEP watershed, then they're considered higher-value wetlands. And they may be able to receive more credits for it. But what the, somebody that wants to start a wetland mitigation bank has to get approval by an agency. And it has to be a governmental agency, and it's called an intra-review agency, inter-agency review team. Works with a homeowner and, or, sorry, a property owner, and also whoever the banker is going to be, ultimately. And they look at the baseline of the property, and they decide how many credits the property may or may not be able to provide. They decide if this property is even, if it's even feasible to be a wetland mitigation bank. And then they start negotiating. And the banker, of course, wants them to give them more credits for the land. And the agency sort of works with them to determine what they think is fair. And they come up with a number. And then an applicant that wants to develop within the service area of that wetland mitigation bank can go to the wetland bank and the banker and say, if I purchase, like, say I want to impact about a half acre of wetland. They can buy credits to compensate for that impact to the wetland.
So, Michelle, this basically works the way that they established the ozone CO2 mapping. In other words, if you use more CO2, you could purchase to supply in monetary. In that case, over here will be land purchased someplace else.
Correct.
I know you're calling, they, would this be local New York State DEC, EPA, or would this be federal?
So this, they're working with DEC on this. So I think DEC would probably be part of the inter-agency review team. But I believe they also, DEP is also involved. Like, I know, I don't know that that's 100% been worked out yet, but I know that they've met with both DEP and DEC. So I believe that DEC would be the organization or the agency that would oversee this particular bank. I think it can be many different organizations, depending on where the bank is located and what it's being used for and who's involved. But in this particular case, I believe DEC would be the, DEC with DEP involvement would be the agency.
So now, if somebody comes in front of our boards for approval on developing a piece of property, our hands are kind of tied at this point because they, we send them to a secondary agency to review and comply with that. How do you feel about that?
So what happens right now, I mean, that piece of the puzzle isn't gonna really change. What'll happen now is that you, a developer will go to develop a piece of property, and he still has to meet the requirements that are typical with, under wetland law, under SECC. But what can happen now is when they have to, when they propose mitigation, they have, potentially, if this is approved, they have a choice. So they can either provide the mitigation on their own. And what's happened in the past is when people provided the mitigation on their own, typically, it was not well-done, and the wetland mitigation would fail. So the applicant would spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in some cases.
Or they don't have the room on their property.
Or they don't have the room on the property to mitigate a wetland. And the wetland wouldn't do so well. And ultimately, five years down the line, it wouldn't be functioning. So all this money and time was wasted. And also, the approval process for getting a wetland mitigation plan implemented is very lengthy. So, and as Nick said, oftentimes, they might not have the area on their own property to mitigate, and it would actually remove developable area from a site. So in an area where you might want development to occur, you are actually having to provide regulatory compliance with either some sort of wetland or even stormwater or something. And so this can actually reduce that requirement and allow them to move the mitigation off-site. Now, there are some rules about exactly how much of the service area can be managed. Like, in other words, this particular wetland is located, and wetland bank potentially could be located in East Fishkill. And then, you know, where in the region can people apply to use this wetland bank? That is all, has to still be determined. And they look at the service area, anything that's in that particular watershed, but they also may extend that service area to be a more regional service area, especially because this site is in the DEP watershed. So it has regional implications for water quality. So therefore, it allows them potentially to expand the reach of what projects could buy into this wetland mitigation bank.
So if, you said at the beginning that this program will reduce the cost to somebody that wants to...
It can.
Right. But not necessarily will. Because if the cost of exchanging certain wetlands for an interior wetland someplace else, we still have the agency telling that project person, what is the cost then?
So the advantage in this case, I understand, I think I know where you're going with this. The advantage in this case is, one, it gives, the developer can actually approach a bank when they know that they have wetland impacts. And they can buy the credits right away. So they can continue with their project. And what happens is, once the bank sells the credits, the bank is solely responsible for that wetland mitigation. So now, the developer is free and clear. And the permittee, or the person that has to fulfill the obligations of the mitigation is the banker. So it can cut down the time that a developer is in the approval process, which does save money. It also gives certainty in a project. Because a lot of times with DEC, and we've experienced it on the town level with projects that we've had to get approved, it can take months and years to get these permits. This speeds up that process and also speeds, it allows them to get investors on board quicker if they have other investments that are, investors that are not gonna invest in the project until they know for certain it can happen. So it gives certainty and efficiency into the process.
So also, you, they potentially save engineering costs and everything else.
Correct, correct.
So let me get it right. So we have a couple sites in town that are heavy industrial sites. And some of those sites, that I know of for sure, have wetlands on them that are very valuable because they border big roads. And I know that they've come, that they would like to build on those. But they're wetlands, and they can't mitigate it. So potentially, if this is passed, they could go to them and mitigate the wetlands and build there.
Correct. So what they would do is, let's just say, they have three acres of property So, so what they would do is, let's just say, they have three acres of property that is currently considered a wetland or an adjacent area, which is regulated by DEC. They could go to, they work with DEC, and they say, okay, you know, rather than providing the mitigation on our site, which would require us to take a piece of land that we, we want to develop and put a wetland mitigation project on it, we are proposing to buy credits in a wetland mitigation bank, which would allow the bank to improve wetlands in that approved site, that wetland mitigation site, which is helpful to the DEP watershed, which is helpful to habitat in that, in that location, and, and provides other benefits. And, and that's a much more high-quality wetland that would be being restored, rather than the wetland that's on the site where an industrial property is. And, and allows them to utilize that site for their mitigation. And then, ultimately, it's negotiated, and it's very, very complicated. I don't fully understand the negotiation, but.
Right.
But it, it is, it's all about the function, it's all about how much they can sell their credits for, and.
It's a business thing.
It's a, it's a, it's transaction. It becomes a transaction.
Right.
And ultimately, the banking entity hires, in my understanding of it, they hire, you know, wetland people that come in, and they, they do all the, the banking, and then they're required to, depending on, it's, it's all, you know, figure it out ahead of time. But they're required to report back to the agency. The agency does site visits, and they make sure that the wetland is functioning the way it's supposed to be functioning.
So, in your experience, is there a rate that they establish? In other words, let's say on a scale of one to three, certain medications are worth this much, certain are worth something else, and.
I think that's what she was talking about.
Yes.
It all depends upon the value of, that it's over.
Is it already written by a why, or is just up in the air, they decide whatever?
It gets written as part of their agreement, I believe.
So, there is nothing established, pre-established?
Correct, correct.
Well, wouldn't, when they get their approval for the, for the wetland mitigation area, wouldn't they have to comply to some sort of regulatory?
Yes, absolutely. So, what they do is, they negotiate that.
Because they can't just say it's a million dollars an acre.
No, 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 no. They have, that's all negotiated as part of the base. They, they go out and they do a study of whatever site is being proposed to be done, and they determine, based on that study, the different functions that that wetland provides. And then, there's some monetary value assigned for every bit of.
Oh, okay.
And they also figure out, so they figure out the baseline of the wetland. So, let's just say, this particular site that, that this property owner is talking about was bisected by eighty-four, right? So, we, we can assume that wetlands were destroyed when the road went in, that there, there may be invasive species like phragmites in the wetlands, that there is probably a lot of runoff that they're dealing with from the highway system that's going in with certain chemicals from the roadway, whatever. So, that has probably all affected the wetlands over time, right? So, they, so they do a study, they figure out where the wetlands are and how much credit can be applied, or how much restoration needs to be done to get those wetlands functioning the way they want them to function. And that difference between the baseline and the highest point of functioning that they want the wetlands is, is where you get your.
Where the value.
Your value and your credit.
That's okay.
And then, ultimately, that is all, though, I think what you were asking is, that's all figured out as part of the contract in the initial, when they decide to agree to allow it to become a wetland bank. So, that's done ahead of time. So, that's, you can't, they're not changing it for any applicant that comes in, I think is what you were asking.
Yeah, and the other thing, all the studies that they are conducting, usually, they're paid by the company that is applying for the credits, correct? It's not the agency doing the study?
I don't believe it's the agency. I believe it's probably the company, but I believe the agency reviews every single thing, and then they, or they, and they go out and they do their own studies as well.
And there is a cost to that.
Correct, correct. And I don't know exactly how that all works.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there's probably, there's probably an upfront cost to the bank, too, to the, to the property owner of the bank, because there has to be some initial engineering done to, to figure out, you know, what type of wetland you're dealing with, you know, what's that low and high threshold that determines that, you know, the, the credits that are available, and what can be done, you know?
Correct. I would imagine, I mean, I think it's very, and I actually have, the gentleman that I've been speaking with, to explain this to me, sent me a bunch of information late this afternoon, and I haven't had a chance to read through all of it yet. But I believe a lot of those questions I could probably answer for you in a week or so, once I've got a chance to go through all the information. But it's, and I can, and I also, you know, if anybody has any questions after tonight, the gentleman that I was speaking with told me that we could feel free to contact him and ask him any questions.
So, he is becoming the expert on this locally right now?
Well, he's, this, the gentleman that I've been talking to has done this in, in many other locations in the country, and he is actually out of Virginia.
Okay.
So, he's sort of an expert on it. Most of these, this is the other unusual thing, there's not very many wetland mitigation banks in New York State. They're highly used in the South Atlantic and in the Mississippi Valley, but they have not really taken hold here in New York State, in part because our regulatory system is more difficult, but.
Oh, really?
But, and, you know, when he was in here, he actually told me that this would be the first one in New York State. Now, I, there's, there's several different ways that these banks can be set up. And when I was reading, or skimming through the document this afternoon, right before I came here, to see if that was actually true, I did see that there were some wetland mitigation banking things happening, what looked like up near the Great Lakes region. However, I don't know if they would be in this, this, functioning exactly the same as this one would be. So, this may be the first of its kind to function the way that they're planning on it functioning. And it's certainly the first one in the region. So, that, it's a big deal.
Well, I, and, and, don't take my comments that I don't care about the conservation part, that's excellent, and we're going to increase our wetlands, but my goal for the town is to make it a little bit more easier for developers to come and use property that is not usable, because it's a wetland. So, my question would be this, if they would get approval, and if the town board would consider approving that wetland bank up there, can we ask them, or with their approval, tell them that they have to keep a certain percentage aside for East Fishkill projects only?
I, I believe, I did ask that question when I was meeting with them, if they would be, you know, if they have the flexibility of setting, setting aside. I didn't ask it specifically to East Fishkill necessarily, but I said, do you have the flexibility of setting aside credits for certain types of things? And the answer was, yes, they do. Because ultimately, the bank is, it's typically a private entity, so they can sell their credits to whomever they want to sell their credits to. And I believe they probably have some flexibility in adjusting the price of those credits within a range, right? They're probably not allowed to go above a certain range, which is maybe set with, with the agreement, but they probably can go below. I mean, all of this stuff, I don't know for certain, but I'm, I'm guessing.
I'm still having a little hard time with the concept. So, you're saying now that the bank is a private entity? So, they created the system and sold it to the EPA as an idea?
Yeah, so the, well, I don't know exactly the, the initial start of the whole system, but yes, the, the banks themselves are typically.
Private businesses.
Private businesses. Because they're similar to, you were astutely referring to the carbon banking. It's similar i- i- in a way to that.
Right.
So, what they do is, they have these entities that actually trade the credits, right? And those are private. However, it's completely regulated by the agency, and the agency has to approve the project to allow them to even buy into the bank. And the agency also has to, has to approve, you know, pretty much all of the regulations and all of the, the, set all of the requirements for that bank. So, it's very, it's very regulated. But it does provide, I would say, it provides flexibility to developers that want to, especially here in East Fishkill, because we do have a, a very large amount of wetlands here, and a lot of wetlands, and a lot of our industrial sites were put in prior to wetland laws. So, now, when we go to redevelop those sites, it's very, very difficult, because they were developed before there were any laws, and now, moving a building, you know, a foot puts you into a regulated water body. And, and that really limits the redevelopment of some of these sites. So, this could actually help with redevelopment of, of some of the industrial properties, but again, it has to be approved.
So, just as a suggestion, would you consider, I mean, is your understanding and probably your suggestion that Albany do something about this, since we don't have anything in New York State? Is this something that Albany should kind of facilitate for, probably for more of this to happen in the community?
Well, I think in 2008, when the EPA and the US Army Corps of Engineers got together to promulgate the new rules, that's what they were trying to do. They were trying to create a system that would allow this type of wetland mitigation banking to occur more frequently, because they sort of determined that it was working better than the previous type of mitigation, which was just a private person doing their own mitigation and it not working at all. So, they'd said, these banks, we can, we can regulate, we can, if we put all of the wetland mitigation in one location, we can create higher, larger, higher-functioning wetlands, rather than like, you know, a thousand feet of square feet of wetland here, and maybe a half an acre here, that aren't connected and can't really provide the habitat that you need. So, they looked at all these different things, and they determined that this was probably going to create better-functioning wetlands and, and be true to mitigation more than individual mitigation was. So, they, they, the federal government asked that people start considering this, and they have, they have set out on a path to train people to create more of these wetland mitigation banks. And my guess is, for whatever reason, it just took longer to get to New York State, but it is happening. And I know that he said he was also working on a project potentially in Mohawk Valley. So, so I think it is happening, more and more in New York State.
The only thing we should suggest is that lobbyists in New York City don't get a grip on this and influence our regulations in our localities, because at the end of the day, they usually tell the state what to do in order for them to have the quality water that they desire. But we end up paying for it by, you know, they mandating us, telling the, the local people in East Fishkill, this is what you gotta do, because they like beautiful, great water.
Well, in this case, I actually think it works to our advantage, because we can use the fact that they need high-quality water to create more credits for ourselves, because we happen to have property located within the watershed. So, if they want to develop somewhere in East Fishkill that's not in, say, the DEP watershed, but you want to put a, you want to just impact a wetland in that location, you can choose the site and, and change. So, I think in this case, it actually benefits us.
So, who would own this?
So, the property owner maintains the ownership.
The property owner, is he going to sell it?
Nope, he's, he still owns the property. So.
He owns it now, but is he going to sell it?
He's gonna, no, he's still going to own the property, it's still in his ownership. And I asked him that. They didn't really, the property owner and his sister were very emotionally attached to the property, and they did not want to sell the property. So, I think, and now they're elderly, so I don't know ultimately who owned it. But I think the idea was.
But all, but the money they get paid, I assume this land will still be taxable?
Yes, and I don't know, and, you know, that's.
I don't know what they pay, but anyway, that's irrelevant. But it's, any money they get, so IBM's gonna, IBM's not gonna write them a check. Global Foundries is gonna send a check over for a hundred thousand dollars. They've got to spend that hundred thousand dollars in fixing up their wetlands.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
And I think.
Minus the 90% payrolls.
My understanding is that some of the money goes to the bank, but some also, the landowner also obviously gets paid at some sort of.
He's got to make his money.
Right.
Because they're essentially renting the land, right, to the bank?
Like a land lease.
So, once their land becomes part of the bank, they have limited access to that, or how does that work?
I believe there's some sort of, I don't know if it's an easement, but it may be. There's some sort of easement that says you can, you can't develop this.
And no longer build or do whatever. So, they don't put restriction, I think that's what he, he was referring to.
Yeah, they put restrictions, he's not going to be able to develop the land.
Well, is this similar to the?
Yeah, but it's not, I mean, there's restrictions on it now, and the fact that it's a New York State wetland, so.
Is this similar to the buying the land rights thing that they tried to do here several, 15 years ago?
It is, it is similar. It's, it's similar in that it, there's a.
The only thing, though, is still going to be paying taxes on it, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's not very, it's not very develop, developable property.
No, the property's still.
Because it's in DEP watershed, it's a wetland already, so, you know.
Which is why it's even.
They just want to get it up to where they want.
It's why they can even consider it a site for a wetland bank. If it was, you know, if it didn't have any wetlands on it, there'd be nothing to restore.
Right.
And you wouldn't be able to get very many credits there. This site happens to be, they told me, the ideal site, because it's in a DEP watershed, because it has so many issues with it, because of the fact that eighty-four went through it. They, they think that they can get a low baseline, and they have, they can maintain a lot of credits.
Right, sure. So, to me, I mean, it's, it's kind of a win-win. You, the environment wins, potentially, we can have economic development from it.
That's our key.
And the taxes continue to be paid on the property. Not saying that, you know.
But plus, plus.
But, you know, the town needs a revenue, the town.
Right.
The town president's, yeah, we need the revenue.
Plus, you also have probably, you know, some local job creation potential, because there'll be work going on on the wetland to improve it, you know, to, to, you know, bring it up on the scale, so that's likely to be some local job creation as well.
Right, engineers, out in the field, everything, right.
How do you remediate wetlands that has been affected? Is there a way? I mean, that's.
Get handsome, right?
One of the primary things is to, is to try to eliminate invasive species. You know, that's, that's the, that's one of the biggest things right there.
Eliminate?
Eliminate invasive plant species.
Okay.
Phragmites, purple lostrife, are a couple of the big ones that, you know, that, that are, that, you know, we see in disturbed properties. So, you know, that probably would be one of the first things. You know, second things could be, you know, to, to, you know, do some, you know, do some deliberate revegetation of areas that are eroding possibly, to try to stabilize soils, you know, possibly slowing down the stream channels to make more flood control, that might be a step. I'm just, I'm just making some hypotheses here.
He told me the, the number one thing that these wetland mitigation banks do is, or one of the number one things is flood attenuation. So, they, because wetland plants absorb water, they actually hold water better than other types of plants, and so, you, you actually slow the movement of water with wetlands.
Anything else? I mean, were you done before we stopped you with a question?
Yes, yeah, pretty much, I, I think, I think we got, we covered most of it. But if there's any questions, you can come see me, or, and I can have, send you some additional information.
Can they get us some before and after pictures?
Of some of the wetlands?
From some of the areas that they've done?
Yeah, sure, yeah, absolutely.
Well, it's going to be years from now, but yeah.
No, the one they already did down south.
Down south, there's a few.
Oh, right.
Maybe you'll come back another time and use it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure if we, if we wanted them to come, they would present.
Well, if they come back in front of us, she'll be, yeah.
For the community, it would be better informed.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Michelle, thank you, Brent, thank you both. Great discussion, appreciate it very much. Next on the topic is, next on the agenda is economic development discussion, okay.
Goes right into it.
Right. So, I have handed the town board members a draft of my, my advisory committee. So, one of my main objectives is to focus on economic development and to form a business and economic revitalization advisory committee. It's a long name, but Councilwoman Marinara and I have been discussing this many times, and I think that, you know, I'd not only want it to be economic, but we, I think about our businesses here, too. So, it's the Business and Economic Revitalization Advisory Committee. I laid out the plan, formed to the committee, for this committee to the town board, and I think that the committee is going to address a wide variety of topics, like find, negotiate, and facilitate successful development that is economically good for our town, help determine the most successful uses of sites, and help determine the best industries to develop. I've been looking at other towns to see, especially in Westchester, to see what they've been doing about economic development, and a lot of them are hiring consulting firms, and they hire them to revamp their economics and bring in more businesses. Now, these, these firms are large, and they, they employ a lot of people, and they employ a lot of professionals, like economists, MBAs, input-output modelers, accredited real estate professionals, former real estate developers. They also have in-house planners, traffic engineers, landscape architects, hazard material experts, environmental professionals. You know, all these people analyze a whole slew of different issues, which can influence any project that comes to any town. So, this is what these towns are paying for. They're paying for a big firm with all these professionals to help them with their economic development. So, basically, they give a roadmap to the town boards and action steps to perform. And all these are planning strategies. And these planning strategies, I talked to our town planner about some of them, and I believe that our committee, we have a lot of talented people, we could, we could do this in-house. So, this is also why I'm proposing we need an economic development director. This position would help assist the town and the Business Economic Revitalization Advisory Committee. The director basically would be responsible for marketing East Fishkill to different investors, to the business community, as well as coordinate implementation of our economic policies, to help develop our policies, our strategies, activities, and all the projects that come, come before us. Essentially, he's a, would be, or she would be a liaison between the business community and the town board, and the planning board, and our planning department. So, it's very critical. Also, we have to build on what we already have. That's why it's key to include the businesses. Businesses that are existing here, they need just as much help, and, you know, we must assess their needs and try and help them. Whether it's, you know, applying for revitalization grants for buildings or the downtown area, or help with them to ease the red tape in different departments, we have to look at what we could do to help them. So, we don't have the financial resources to fund this position, really, you know, it's, it's an expense that we don't have. And I've reached out to a lot of our larger and medium-sized businesses in town and to help, ask them to help contribute towards this position, and I've received a very warm reception from them. It would be a part-time position, it would be budget-neutral, which means that it would be fully funded by our business community. The business community sees that there's a need for this, they want this, they, they want the committee, they want somebody to go do to help them. You know, we, we, the town board, we have businesses, other jobs, it's, you know, it's hard to do everything, and it's a big town. So, you know, we need as much help we can, as we can get. So, they want help, and I think we can help them. I'm going to ask the board to take a look at what I proposed, and I'll be discussing with the board before the next meeting on the 22nd. I'd like to get started with our committee. And besides that, that's, that's the roadmap that I have for our, for our new Business Economic Revitalization Advisory Committee. that I have for our, for our new Business Economic Revitalization Advisory Committee. So any questions? Anybody has any questions?
The three representatives from the business community, do you have in mind anybody, any sector?
I've been, no, a wide range of sectors, but my, my goal was if we get the committee together, I would want some people on the committee. Nothing against pizzeria owners, but somebody who could, has some connections that...
It's a new one, they just opened.
Who, who has some connections where they can help bring business in. So maybe one of the goals in the beginning of the advisory committee is to assess how much open retail space we have. Well, maybe somebody on this committee has some connections that they say, well, I know somebody looking for 200,000 square feet of, you know, hydroponic planting, a planting, I don't know, something, or they, somebody who knows they need 50,000 square feet of medical space. So, you know, people who, who work in different industries who could help provide the businesses with help to fill the spaces, because people, we know that there's empty stores and there's empty buildings, and unless they're full, we're not going to build anymore.
Yeah, I agree with you totally. I think, though, that, you know, getting those three representatives is key, and I think we need to really, that's going to give us the input to where to go and which direction to take and help us in the long term, so...
And I left it to seven members, as you could see, but it doesn't mean that we can't get some other advisory members, you know, that can help, and they could, they don't have to be, sit on the board. They could come to some meetings, not all, and they could assist us. So, you know, we could be flexible. It's us drafting it. We're making the committee up, so...
I would think you'd want a commercial real estate agent on there.
Exactly.
Yeah, that would be a key position.
They'll know what's available and not available, and it's, it's key, and I've discussed with our planner, and she's given me a lot of help into what other towns are doing, and she gave me a lot of reading to do, which I did.
You said other towns are doing this as well. What are they, just out of curiosity, what are they paying for something like this?
Oh, some I've seen pay over $150,000 a year. Yeah.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
And upwards. No, no, well, that's, you know, that's why I say if we could start with our committee and get whatever talent we could, we could put on that committee, and if we could get the, a part-time director, which I, I, I'm 99% there with raising some money, which is great.
And you have a commitment? You said you had a commitment from outside?
I have commitments from several, several businesses in town, small, medium. I have like eight people that reached out and said that they went out.
Budget-neutral.
Budget-neutral. It won't cost the town any money, and you know what? I have on here that it's a two, a two-year term. Let's try it. If it doesn't work, then we go back and we see what else we could do.
Yeah.
But we need help. We, we need to do something.
Definitely, the only thing, you know, and I was thinking, while you said that before, I was thinking just about that, the only thing we've got to be careful is whoever we had, for instance, a Realtor, we want to see there is no future conflict of interest in it. We don't want to put on a board somebody who has an intent to sell a piece of property and steer the board in that direction, but we do need somebody definitely that is knowledgeable.
I would think you're going to have conflicts of interest there, just because you want people that are connected, you know?
Yeah, and I thought of that.
Yeah.
I thought of that, but, you know, all the, you know, whoever...
More like a work.
And that's why we'll, we could rotate, we could rotate, you know, members, and that's why I said it's only a two-year term. But whether they're a small business, medium business, or large business, if the large business sector, like, you know, down 52 and other things that we've been working on for a long time, if they're full, all the small and medium businesses reap the benefits. You know, when the subcontractors are going through town and the employers are in and out there, they're visiting our shops here, they're shopping here, they're eating here. So it's vital to the small guy if we get the big guys moving also.
And I believe the other, another really important function is that they can talk to the development community about, a liaison, a committee, can talk to the development community about what the town can do to help facilitate bringing business in. So they can, they can say, you know, what is it that the business community needs from the town and that we can do within the bounds that we're held by to sort of support the businesses? And, you know, is it new signage laws? Is it different, you know, streamlining application processes?
Right, exactly.
Reducing, you know, all of those types of things. And I think that once we get that feedback, and if you have a committee set up that's more neutral about it, then it may be easier for them to talk about it with the committee and have the committee bring it back to the town than have them speaking directly to somebody who works in the town.
You know, Michelle, whatever you're saying is very true. I mean, you talk to people, the business people in the community, and they say they have one way of looking at it, and says, I'll go do business in this town because just what you said. And certain towns have done the work for years to facilitate. I think that we have done for the 52 corridor, you know, we've been working on that for three years, what the town supervisor said, that says we need to do it on a continuous basis. I think once the word is out, East Fishkill is a business from the community, no matter what, but we have to really start implementing some of those changes and make it easier for people to say, okay, I'm going there, it took me two months, three months, and I got what I needed to open the doors. So that is extremely important. I think that this board is really focused on that. We just need an initial sparkle, and then continue on. With your help and everybody else, we'll, we'll be on track.
Yeah, you know, and to have a, and to have somebody help us, like a part-time position, I just feel that, you know, many times you'll call me or somebody else and say, there's a problem with so-and-so, and they're having trouble with whatever permitting or something else. And if it's a week like I've had, and I can't get to it because, you know, we've had major storms and everything else, then that business owner might suffer. So this will relieve the burden for us to, you know, try and squeeze in the time. They'll go to that person and go to the committee and say, I need this, you need to help me. And that's the goal. That's the goal, I think, that we all want and we all need to have. Yeah.
Absolutely.
On board. And the best part, Mark, for the, for the part-time position, I'm raising the funds. I knew you would like that. But I'll be discussing with the board this week and next, with the few, next few coming weeks, and, but we need to get started. It's, it's time.
Long time coming.
Yeah. Any questions, comments? No?
Peter, what do you think?
I think you're going to get a vast number of people that are going to volunteer to be on this committee.
That's a good thing.
A lot of people.
That's a good thing.
That's what I want.
It's going to be, that's going to be the tougher part, to pick seven out of whatever you get.
Well, that's a good problem to have.
Well, that's why I put, you know, I put different representatives, you know, one from our planning board, because obviously, these companies or, and these developers come, they have to go in front of our planning board. So it's good we have a liaison from there. Maybe somebody from, you know, one of our local school boards, maybe from the business community.
Myself?
Yeah, myself and Councilman Marinara are going to sit on it. And I, you know, I put the planner and the economic development director assist us.
We're going to have 27 Pizza Huts over there.
I have somebody from the funeral industry.
No, they're trying to get in.
It's a time.
We have 27 Pizza Huts and two Papa G's and Papa John's.
All right. You done joking, Peter? You done now? You got 10 seconds.
Never ask your opinion.
Yeah. Go on, what's that?
All right. Well, thank you, board. Thank you, everybody. Now is open discussion. Anybody discuss anything you like? Councilman? Deputy Supervisor?
Just a couple of things to report. The East Fishkill Highway Department, in case anybody didn't know, was out for over 24 hours in that storm yesterday. They worked with the state and the East Fishkill Police Departments and the police and the highway and everybody. They got all the roads, and everybody did a good job. Just a reminder, your cars are not supposed to be on the sides of the roads from November 1st to April 15th. And you're also not supposed to plow snow across the road because it creates big banks for people that are out driving. Both are ticketable offenses, and the East Fishkill PD is here and does know that law.
Do they know it?
They're the ones that are plowing. He's the one plowing.
I got you.
The other thing, mailboxes. Bad news, they are in the town right away. They do not hit them on purpose down in this area, but I was in an area this day, this weekend on Friday, and I swear they do hit them on purpose in that area, because I followed the guy for 20 minutes, and he got at least, he got at least five where I was.
Five?
On a more serious note, cleanup day, Town Cleanup Day, where we pick up the sides of the roads, Sunday, March 31st, if you're interested in stopping to help.
Can you explain, what do you mean, we pick up on the side of roads? Can you explain?
I'm going to go.
Okay, because people...
I got a call today. It's going to be Sunday, March, it's going to be Saturday, March 31st. Town Hall, if you're interested in helping, we usually get recreation, some volunteers, some local neighborhoods. They come, you pick up garbage. You clean up, make the town look good. You get a free breakfast, and you get a free lunch, and you get a T-shirt. Royal Carding donates a dumpster to us every year. It is only for garbage on the side of the road. I got a call today asking what time we'd send a group over to her house to clean up 40 years of garbage from her garage and her attic. I had to inform her that we wouldn't be there. But we've been doing this for 20 years, and it has only rained on 17 of them.
Didn't you start it? Didn't you start it?
I started it, actually, we've been doing it for 22 years. Started with Coca-Cola, actually. Coke or Pepsi helped us start this.
What time does that start?
8:30 in the morning. Be here at Town Hall if you're going to come. Please call 221-4303.
That's my number.
Talk to Gina. If Gina's not there, ask for Nick. If you know of an area that's got to be cleaned, a road that's really bad, we do like to know those, too. Some areas can't do it that day. They schedule another day. One particular area that has always done it for probably 20 years is Loma La. They do it on their own, and we go back in a week or two later and pick it up. So if you've got an area that wants to do it on their own, like Route 52 wants to do it all on their own, we'll send somebody out a week or two later and pick all their garbage up. Anybody that wants to volunteer, we're willing to take you. Also, the last thing, that afternoon at 1:00 PM, after you go pick up garbage, go get a free lunch, go home and get cleaned up, come back to the Easter egg hunt at 1:00 PM at the community center. And I believe, is the police department involved with that again?
PBA.
PBA and recreation put that on.
Could you tell me what town the mailbox guy was?
Yeah, well, after we get off TV.
Oh, right.
As far as cleanup day, town wise, I spoke to some people in the community, they'll say, like, they usually do it on a different day. I suggested to them to do it together with the town so that we pick up, I mean, their garbage due on that day.
Yep, or we can go back, well, even Loma La, we go back and get it at a later date.
Usually they do it later on, but I told them, you know, as a suggestion, let's do it together. Everybody's out that day, let's do it.
I'm just hoping the snow's gone by that day.
Me, too.
Monday, I know that the town supervisor got a couple of invitations to this. I attended a town with the local, some local town supervisor and mayor. Assemblyman Kedala put this together, and the discussion was mostly regarding water in our local communities. And this, there was also on the agenda economic developer. This both ties it together. That's the same discussion we had. It was a great discussion. The mayor of Beacon was there, town supervisor of Fishkill, Wapah Juze. Basically, everybody had their own concerns, and it's the same, same note. They have parts of Route 9 that they can't be developed because there is no water. A lot of the aquifers are contaminated. It mentioned that it is to be used. The biggest aquifer is right on Route 84 and Route 9, and they can't use it because it's got contamination problems. So this was interesting. I think that the supervisor of Fishkill, Pablo Colas, we were working on mapping, putting a map together. They spent some money, it's been going on for a few years, and I think it's a great discussion for us to participate, because it seems like we all have the same needs, we all have the same objectives. So this discussion should continue, and I think probably, Nick, next time he's probably going to be there. But it's something that we could use and work together, and anybody will benefit, everybody in our locality. So that was a great discussion.
Yeah, thank, thank you for attending, too. I apologize. It was the day after the storm, and it's, I was out with the highway superintendent. He was taking me for a ride, looking at some bad areas of town, but I called the Assemblyman. I'm going to meet with him on Monday. And, yeah, it's, I talked with the supervisors and the mayors from those towns, and we could get together and get a plan together to do a regional water districts and other things that we've been talking about. So whatever we could do to help the residents at a, at a good cost is our job.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman.
I just want to, what Pete was saying about the town cleanup day, this is also a good opportunity for high schoolers who need community service hours to go and join that. It's always a good time. As far as recreation, the snow is not helping. Opening day is April the 7th. All the leagues are getting ready, priming it up for opening day. We're just keeping our fingers crossed for a lot of sun, but other than that, everything else has been good. And I want to, again, thank our police chief, Chief Keef, and the great job he and his staff and his men and women have done over the last few weeks with all of the craziness that's been going around town. And the way you guys handled everything was unbelievable, unbelievable. We're really grateful to have you guys. So thank you.
Yeah, we're blessed, blessed with a great police department, fire department, emergency services. Thank you, guys. Every, all of you, men and women, are invaluable to our community.
Before we close the meeting, I have a suggestion, if I can. I think there is a, the other issue that was discussed at that meeting with the rest of the town was the volunteer fire department, and they seem that there is a need locally to address that. I would suggest that the town board members soon, rather than later, meet with the fire volunteers and see how, what we could do to bring the volunteers to the firehouses. So that's something that I think we should work on.
Well, so you know, I'm going to be starting an emergency services committee with Council, with Deputy Supervisor Cassidy, and we are going to have another meeting. I had one with the Fire Board of Commissioners already, and the Deputy Supervisor and I are going to have a meeting next month with them to discuss ways we could implement integration with our services, because we don't want to go to the paid route, because that...
You know, I didn't know much about, you know, they asked me questions, a few of them asked, as far as getting some kind of property tax rate. I mean, I don't know, but probably something could be done. These people are always out there. I know some of them have said that in the past, they proposed it to previous administration, and they were turned down. I would be open for that discussion with them.
Sure.
I don't know how many there are, but these people are dedicated people. They don't look at the clock to go home. I think that whatever we could do to make a benefit of them.[1770.43]